Trying to decide what to do with my office.
Love that McCarran interchange, huh?
All right, let's roll. Okay, this is a call to order for the Sparks Planning Commission meeting of Thursday, April 21st, 2016. Roll call, please. Here.
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 Okay, this is an open meeting and if there's any public comment, the item for either public comment or any other action item for the general public comment is limited to no more than three minutes for each commentator. Wish to speak, hopefully you'll put a card in at the end of the dais. You also have an opportunity to speak on the individual agenda items. Anyone wish to come forward? Seeing none, go to approval of the agenda. Move to approve. Check in. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda approved. Approve of the minutes of the meeting of, excuse me, March 17th, I believe it was. Thank you.
I'll second.
Could I have just one question? Commissioner Vandewell, I know we had that discussion on the maybe deviation and additional use permit on the project on permit.
Yes.
My memory was that you voted against both of those. Did you just vote against the one and for the second one?
Correct.
Okay, so it was correct.
It is correct, thank you.
Very good, thanks.
Approval of the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes so approved. Announcements and committee reports?
Mr. Chairman, we have neither announcements nor committee reports.
Thank you. Any informational items?
Nor do we have any informational items today.
We're rolling along. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Public hearing item number PCN. We'll open up the agenda, excuse me. Public hearing item PCN 15066. Consideration of and possible action on a request to tentatively approve an amendment to the Spanish Springs Town Center Handbook, a planned development to revise the development standards to allow for a mini warehouse use on a site of 41.65 acres in size in the new urban development district zoning district located at 4988 Galleria Parkway, Sparks, Nevada for possible action. The presenter is Ms. Karen Melby, Senior Planner. Welcome.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners, Karen Melby, Senior Planner. Before you tonight is a consideration of a request for tentative approval of an amendment to the Plan Development Handbook known as Spanish Springs Town Center. You'll see on the map here, blue, this is the parcel that would be affected. The Spanish Springs Town Center is, let me see if I can move the mouse here. It borders this property here and then it's also this kind of triangular piece over here is what the Spanish Springs Town Center is. This portion is essentially built out and we've got some of the pads built here. This, the petitioner or the applicant today is E. Bryant Ventures, Inc. On February 25th, 2005, the City Council approved the final Plan Development Handbook for the Spanish Springs Town Center. In January of 2008, the City Council approved a tentative and final amendment to that handbook to allow for and include some standards for allowing lodging and 24-hour uses without a special use permit. Those, as I stated, the northwest section there is pretty much built out. This request is the Second Amendment to this handbook. I have received and I passed out at study session on Tuesday that we received eight comments in opposition to this project or concerns about the 16-foot wall on the property, south property line, which would be this property line right here. The applicant, Desert Wind Homes, and the applicant's representative have worked out a compromise and I've given you those pages. I emailed those two yesterday and then we also handed you copies tonight for the revised wording for that. What they're proposing is, can you switch to this? What they're proposing is they're going to have a 20-foot setback on the south property line, on this property line here, and then they'll have 10 and 10 and then 15-foot setback. They also on the south property line have agreed to that the wall, instead of the 16-foot wall, will be a 10-foot wall. The text that I handed you tonight reflects those changes. The applicant is amending the handbook to allow this new use, mini warehouse. It could be with, it would be with a caretaker's unit. And this would only be allowed in this one area that it was shown blue on my vicinity map, which is known as RCS 02. In Chapter Two, under the section of Architectural, Section Five, they've added a new section which outlines the standards for the development of the mini warehouse project. And looking at the findings, this amendment is to allow a new use, a mini warehouse, that establishes development standards within the handbook. The amendment is consistent with the purpose of the handbook. The addition of the mini warehouse project does not depart from zoning. Typically, C2 zoning does allow many mini warehouse projects, nor do its subdivision regulations. It will not change the previously approved ratio of residential, since this project never had any residential in it. It will not change the previously approved open space requirements. They are still going to be the same and they also will provide a minimum of 10% landscaping with the development of this project. The Plan Development Handbook provisions for public service utilities, infarmanities like light, air, and recreation have been addressed, especially now with setting that wall back 10 feet. That also, when you, the 20 feet, when they set that wall back 20 feet, there will be landscaping within that area. We've agreed that they don't need to put shrubs because nobody's going to see them. So they're only going to put trees that would help break up that rear wall and then also they're going to gate this area off so that the only people that have access to this area will be the maintenance people for the mini warehouse project. The impacts related to the neighborhood have been presented to you in the amended pages and also staff will be looking at that. This project will require an administrative review for actual development of the project, so we will be looking at all those issues again when the actual development project comes in for review. The proposed amendment maintains the integrity of the plan by retaining the land uses that were originally approved in the handbook for Spanish Springs Town Center and while allowing the, an additional use only in that, this area is shown there. The western portion of the Plan Development is built out, so it would not, this amendment would not affect that portion of the property unless they were doing, well, actually, no, it's only allowed in that, this one section. The amendment will only affect the eastern portion. The proposed amendment standards have regulations for the amount of landscaping, architectural design standards, sign standards, and operational standards, which include that they have to have a caretaker who will live on the site, as hours of operation, construction limit on the construction hours, and also a limit on maintenance hours. So they can't be doing like sweeping or snow removal in the middle of the night. Any traffic, lighting, and noise would be addressed with the, is either addressed in the handbook or would be addressed with the administrative review. The last thing I'd like to note is that when you make the motion, if you make a motion to approve this project tonight, make sure that you include that you are including the revised pages, if that's your choice tonight. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the commissioners?
Karen, on the setbacks.
Mm-hmm.
Does the Officer Caretaker residence shall be setback a minimum of 15 feet?
50 feet.
Fifty?
Said 15. 15 feet from the front and side property lines and 50 feet from the south property line.
Yes. And the reason for that, this, the residential unit will be a second-story unit and so we wanted to, staff wanted to make sure that this residential unit did not have the potential of looking down onto these single-family homes to the south. So that's why we required the 50-foot setback.
Karen?
Yeah?
You mentioned that there were eight respondents originally?
Yes, I received eight emails.
I was, does Desert Wind, Desert Wind, is that the name of the project? Does Desert Wind Homes represent all eight of those or hopes that potential buyers? Who are?
Victor with Desert Homes, he was just one of the eight.
And the other eight were individuals?
Mm-hmm, yes. One of them was the Goddard School and then I had several of the property owners within Galleria Station. And then actually, one property owner from west, east of Vista and I'm not sure, they're beyond the noticing district, so I don't know how they got it. But most of them were residents within the vicinity. One resident was north of Los Altos.
Would the developer or applicant like to come forward?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Melissa Lindell with Wood Rogers and I have with me today the applicant, Eric Bryant, Skylow Dangler, and Bill Flyner, who represents the P V. This property was originally and is still approved for commercial use and we're asking to add the mini warehouse as an additional use. Prior in the handbook, there was no setback for this back area, so there was shown just a conceptual plan that would have a commercial use with the back of house abutting these single-family residences. I think when the plan was first came in, they were going to be condominiums and they changed over to single-family residences. So the original handbook didn't really address buffering. It did have a drive aisle, which in my mind, if you, with this mini warehouse project, you've got the buffer plus the building, which serves as a wall. So nobody is going to be able to drive back there like they would in the original project, have storage or deliveries. Nobody's going to be able to drive back, look over the fences. So in my mind, this is a great use for the property and for the residents because they're going to have more protection and security. We did meet with Desert Winds and there was a lot of going back and forth on how the design was going to look and we came up with the compromise situation where there's going to be a 20-foot landscape buffer and then there's going to be a minimum, the first row of the buildings can only be 10 feet in height. So that was the compromise that was agreed to by Desert Winds. We have standards in the handbook that we added for articulation, hours of operation, restrictions. So, you know, everybody's comfortable that nobody's going to be living in the units because there'll be an onsite manager and the hours of operation are such that people can't camp out and stay there all night. The colors varying, roof lines. So with that, we would be coming back with an administrative review with all the details. In terms of access, nobody's going to be, the access from this is, if you look up on the screen, off of Galleria Parkway and then through on the northern part of the parcel that's outlined in green. So that's where the cars will be, so the cars won't be coming through or south or right adjacent to the residential units and they'd also be coming from the north from that existing commercial. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions at the appropriate time.
Yep, Mr. Chairman, I have one. Is there any kind of an average ADT, average daily trips for mini warehouses or?
It's a pretty low, low use. There's no peak hour use, but, and I'd have to defer to Mr. Bryant, who develops a lot of these mini warehouses, but we weren't required to do a traffic study because of the existing commercial uses that are already allowed in there.
Right, I know there was a summarized traffic report done, but that was way back from the initial.
Right, and I believe that the, I know that the trip rates are much higher for commercial use as a shopping center than a mini warehouse and that, and the time differences are such, they're not PM, AM or PM peaks when people are coming to mini warehouses like you might to a Starbucks or.
Thank you.
I apologize for missing two of these people who weren't asked this question. But just conceptually, the actual wall on the facility itself will be eight feet, not 10 feet. It's the building which will be 10 feet, isn't that correct?
Correct, the building.
So explain to me, there will be 20 feet of buffering and then an eight-foot wall and then where, how far from that eight-foot wall will the 10-foot building be?
You know, the eight-foot wall would be around on the sides and so forth if buildings aren't on the wall. Typically, the mini warehouse facilities are designed so the building is the wall. So in this case, there'd be 20 feet of landscaping and then the first set, row of buildings would be 10 feet high, representing the, the 10, kind of a wall. It's actually the back of the building. And then if there are fences or walls, gates and so forth, the staff restricted them to eight feet high.
Oh, anything other than the back of the?
Other than the back.
The 10-foot back of the first building, presumably, is what you're saying? That's confusing in here, but I see what you're saying, okay. Thank you. We had a similar kind of discussion about a similar project our last meeting and one of the issues that was hanging several of us up was the likelihood of large moving kind of vans coming in when people either left or came in with stuff. And number one, how often that happened and number two, what would happen logistically in terms of how they would get into the facility and off of what road and what sort of arrangements were made for the traffic, potential traffic congestion associated with these large moving vans that would come in from time to time?
Correct, okay. I'm told by the applicant that the large moving vans are just not a very frequent event. However, if I could go over here, is there a microphone over there?
There's one right there.
So in terms of access, all the access would be off Galleria Parkway to the north here. The entrance would be in this area here. Trucks would circulate around and come back or through the shopping center via Los Altos. So this is all planned for commercial, there's a church planned in this area. This is all planned for commercial and the commercial pads here. So they're used to delivery trucks and the like. We are required and have met with the fire department in terms of turning access radiuses inside and through the facility. And the plan is to have the manager's office in this area, so it's well far away from the residential. But that's where the trucks would come in if there are many that do come in.
So presumably, they would be more likely, if they knew where they were going anyway, to come off Los Altos and go through the current commercial development.
Straight through. Because I'd give them a straight shot. They could come in, circle up, and then go back.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the DASB? This is a public hearing. Would anyone from the public like to come forward and express their opinion? Bring it back to the DASB. Any further comments from the commissioners?
I'd like to, I forgot to mention that I handed out to you before the meeting an email.
Yes.
Victor with Desert Winds couldn't make it tonight. He apologized, but he sent me that email this afternoon and said that he has reviewed the proposed standards and has, he finds them to, doesn't have a problem with them. Yes.
So Victor is the author of the?
No, he's not the author. He's just, he's the, he's the developer with Desert Homes.
Okay, but he's agreeing to these?
He's agreeing to those. And I forgot to mention that I handed you that email.
Is there anyone clear on that? Any comments from the commissioners? We'll bring it back for a vote or a motion, please. This is an open public meeting. No one speaks. Say you are closing, oh, excuse me.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Well, first of all, I have to close the public meeting, so no one speaks. We are closing the public meeting. I'd like to bring it back to the DASB.
I'm prepared to make a motion. I move to forward a recommendation to City Council for tentative approval of a request for an amendment to the Spanish Springs Town Center Plan Development Handbook associated with PCN 15066, adopting findings PDA through PDG and the fact supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report with the revisions that have been made and included, the revised pages.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? PCN 15066.
Good luck with your project.
The next item on the agenda is PCN 15058, which is consideration of and possible action on a request to tentatively approve the Golden Triangle Handbook, a planned development on a site of 43.83 acres in size in the new urban development district, new urban development zoning district located at 6,000 Vista Boulevard, Sparks, Nevada. Presenting will be Ian Crittenden, Senior Planner. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Members of Planning Commission. Thank you, said Ian Crittenden, Senior Planner. This is a tentative, a request for tentative approval to a Plan Development Handbook. This is a vicinity map for this project. Just to kind of get your bearings, here's Vista Boulevard as it comes out towards Winfield Springs development area. And this triangle that's kind of on the, and this is going to be an issue as we try to describe what the things are at, it's on the southeast side of Vista there. So just to recap some of the history of this project, it was originally part of the Kylie Ranch Northeast Gulf Communities Handbook. When that handbook was approved, this piece of property stayed in the open space land use designation and the A40 zoning, which is an agricultural zoning. In 2014, this property was rezoned into the new urban district, which is essentially our planned development district. And the master plan land use was changed to MX or mixed use. Subsequent to that, in last year, in 2015, this project, the handbook for the Northeast Gulf Communities was rescinded or abandoned and this became, lack of a better term, an orphaned parcel that had the new urban district zoning, but had no Plan Development Handbook. So this property became undevelopable until a handbook was approved. It also is in what's called the North Sparks Sphere of Influence, or the N S S O I. And that area, that sphere of influence requires that all new developments go through the Plan Development process and so that also requires that this Plan Development Handbook comes in. The handbook for this project is a little different than some we've seen in the past. It does not, well, it approves a palette of uses that are both single-family residential, multifamily residential, commercial, and so forth, including mini warehouse uses and a conditional use of a, like a workout area or a fitness center of over 3,000 square feet. So all those are uses inside the table that's allowed. But the ratio or mix of these uses is not determined or laid out in the handbook. It's been left to be open and flexible and respond to market demands as well as the developer inclinations. So this project will develop as a series, or this development will develop as a series of projects, if that makes sense. So each of those projects will have to come in through the city for administrative review or a conditional use permit, depending on what that project entails. The Plan Development Handbook lays out design standards for all of the uses that are approved or laid out as approved or permitted uses in the handbook. It lays out the design guidelines, which we will use through the administrative review or the conditional use permit process to govern the quality of development and how it looks and how it flows as it moves forward. Okay, sorry, I got ahead of myself in my notes. The, it also, a traffic study was performed for this location and the opinion from the traffic report and the opinion of staff is that the first development that happens inside of this area, inside the Golden Triangle, will require a signal light to be installed. If we, I have additional pictures here. Look at this picture here. It has approximate locations for access points in this development. You can see the center one is where the proposed signal light would go with first development. That's not an exact location, but that's the approximate location as are a right-in, right-out towards the southwest and a right-in, right-out on the northeast portion. And then there'll be an additional secondary gated access. That's the max number of, they'd be allowed as four access points and they wanted to make sure that that one is in there, but it's got a little bit more float to it of its exact location. It'll be determined by those projects that come in and how they'll need that additional access and ability for turning radiuses, emergency vehicles, deliveries, all those kind of things will play into that layout and circulation and design. Staff reviewed this idea of these many entrances. Specific engineering looked at them. They felt comfortable with approximate locations. They will be determined specifically as projects come in that will require them. So these haven't been designed per se and that'll have to happen with those developments. In addition, each project as it comes in, we'll have to update the traffic study that came in to make sure that, you know, the piece there proposing to develop and, you know, time that has passed hasn't changed what would be required or what the demand and the impact that that specific development would have and so forth. So they'll update that as it goes to make sure that they're continuing to address traffic issues as they come up. The findings required for plan developments, I wanted to kind of go through those and how they apply to this project. The purpose of a plan development as set forth in the city code states that it's trying to encourage flexibility and creativity in design. The approach that's being taken with the plan development does meet that goal. It does offer a lot of flexibility. There are development maximums for the different applied uses or permitted uses, but the ratio is just not set in stone. And so the last section of the purpose as stated in the And so the, the last section of the, the purpose as stated in the, the plan development section of the code states that looking, that, that part of what they're doing is looking for a degree of certainty as far as build-out timing. Because they didn't draw in an area that they said this will specifically be this and this will specifically be this use, it's really hard for them to give a build-out timing with that. But what we can say is the flexibility they built into the, the approach will reduce the likelihood of them needing to amend this, which shortens that timeframe. You know, anytime we have to amend a handbook, it's just more time. And, and so this, this gives them more flexibility in that way. As far as looking at how far this departs from existing zoning or land use, it doesn't really. The, the existing uses would be available pretty much in C2. There's a little bit wider range than, than there would be in C2 as, as permitted by right, but they're all in that same category. And there's no, there would be no change to the subdivision regulations. As I said before, the, the ratio of residential to commercial has not been predetermined and will, will, will come out of the development projects and the master developer, who they are able to get to come in and build different pieces of this. They did address open space, they will be providing twenty percent open space. You can kind of see it on the current slide, if I come up here. You can see on this slide, essentially they have two zones inside of the district, a development zone and an open space zone, the brown being the development area and the blue being a common open space area. That also happens to be, and I'll go up one more slide, the area of high slope on their site. Our hillside ordinance would require them to not develop as much of that area, so they're just avoiding it as best they can, leaving it open as common open space for the development. So between that large common open space area and open space between projects and throughout projects, they'll, they'll meet or exceed that twenty percent. Addressing needed utilities, all those utilities are available at, at Vista. As these projects come in, they will be required to extend those utilities into the project for, for their specific needs, but also to be able to, you know, stub those utilities out so that the next person can come through and, and attach on it, keep moving it. So as, as staff looks at administrative reviews and so forth, and any conditional use permits that may come before the planning commission, we'll continue to look at how the current project will affect future projects and making sure that this can continue to develop and that there's no stumbling blocks put in there. As I said, one of the biggest impacts this is going to have on the area is traffic. They've, they've done their traffic study and looked at how they can, can address those, those issues as best they can. More, anything is going to mean more traffic, so development out here is, you know, that's just part of the, the, the process and the nature of development, so. And then, a- as I said earlier, the last condition or the last findings about timing, timing for this project's not predetermined. But like I said, they, they're going to, as each development comes in, they'll be updating kind of, you know, the traffic study, they'll be updating their site circulation and so forth to make sure that the next piece can come in and move along at a good pace and so forth. That is the end of my presentation, if you have any questions for me, I'm available.
Ian, I have a question. You indicated in the traffic study that a signal light will be required with the first development on this site. How is, how is first development defined?
So the, the first project that comes in that wants to build anything here, that's going to trip that requirement for, for that, that signal light. So anything, so right now, we're just, this is essentially a rezoning. You know, plan developments are essentially rezonings, they're a little more complicated than that, but that's essentially what they happen as, so there's no specific project right now on the property. We, we, we really don't know how much commercial to how much residential will happen right now. The fact that they've looked for that palette of uses means, you know, gives us an indication that they're trying to get a variety of those uses that, that are sustainable at that location. So we'll get a mix probably of, of all of these to some degree or another. That first phase, that first project that'll come in, that's how we determine it in, in other handbooks normally would say, the first phase, this is the first project that comes in that's going to put, and I don't know how they'll, they'll work it out, but that, that developer and the master developer on the hook to get that signal light installed and approved. And it'll go through the normal process of coming through the city and engineers looking at it and everybody getting on board with the design and so forth.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ian, as, as somewhere in here was the, a list of the potential kind of developments that might occur. And it seemed to me that, that the vast majority of them would be subject to administrative review instead of a conditional use permit. So we're, we are unlikely as a board to, to ever see this again unless one of those very small things occur that trips it into a conditional use permit. Am I reading that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's the way that we deal with most developing this in what we'd call, you know, the planner jargon, straight zone properties in, in the city, you know, your current, you know, C2 properties or industrial properties. Anytime they develop, or for that matter, multifamily properties, anytime they develop, they come in for an administrative review and we go through essentially the, the various regulations that they'll be subject to, and, and that involves both planning and building and fire and environmental control, which is kind of sewer and stormwater. You know, we, we try to, in engineering, we, we try to cover all our bases and make sure that, that we go through it with them and they understand, you know, what's going to be expected of them and, and how their developments can impact those people around them and any future development. In this case, for sure, is going to, we're going to want to make sure that they don't cut something off so that, that there continues to be development throughout the site.
Did I, did I read that correctly, that, that, at least on the list that we were given, that, that a large athletic facility would be the only thing that would trigger a conditional use permit?
Yeah, yes, that's correct.
Is that because of traffic?
Yeah, they, they have a, a specific impact on traffic so far.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward?
Wow, double duty.
Thank you.
For the record, Melissa Lindell with Wood Rogers. I have Carlos Vasquez and Matt Kylie with me in the audience tonight, who are the applicants. We worked really hard with Ian and Karen and really appreciated all the, all the help they gave us in coming up with the development standards handbook. And because it is mixed use and the development standards that we used or tailored off the new standards that the city of Sparks has just implemented, that's why we ended up with all, almost all projects going through administrative review because the standards in the handbook are so stringent and they do follow the newly adopted design standards for the city, so that's how we got to that situation. This property is kind of an isolated triangle. On the east side here is our large eight acre plus open space area and this eastern spot is owned by Red Hawk Land Company and the golf courses are further to the east. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. This is the eight acre area buffer. So it's a good buffer between the Red Hawk land, which the, the residential part is quite a bit further to the east. This land to the south is BLM land, so there'll be no development there. This land over here is part of the Kylie Ranch Conservancy Foundation. So it's kind of an isolated triangle and it has been anticipated for mixed use. So land uses and a combination of residential and commercial have been anticipated and that's why we were able to also do a traffic study with a mix of uses and come up with, with the requirement for the traffic signal right, right off the bat, prior to the first certificate of occupancy. So that's important, we worked with John Martini on that and we worked with John on, on the access points. We'll keep, keep working as this project comes forward. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I just have one more question, there was a reference made some, someplace in the document about the possibility of, of some part of Wingfield Springs looking down on this, which I suppose might be a negative to somebody, but I can't figure out where that would be. The top of that hill, I live in Wingfield Springs, so I drive by there every day. The top of that ridge becomes, it's the golf course on the other side and there's potential for homes, but I can't imagine unless you had a very large home right at the peak of that ridge, any, any homeowner looking down on that facility. And I'm, I'm just imagining somebody at some point maybe complaining, but I, I, I can't even imagine how that would happen. But it did say so in the, in the, in the document.
Well, the only place where that could occur would be kind of over past the golf course area and, you know, this is quite a distance away, plus the, the hill's going up. So this kind of sits, sits in the valley, so.
Yeah, I, I can't imagine, but.
Quite a.
I was surprised to see that because I didn't think that would be an issue, but I was.
I think everybody that, that is up in this area by the golf course can look across.
Exactly.
This isn't going to block anybody's view or anything like that.
Thank you.
Melissa, I have a question. On the, on the north side, we have a, I think a four foot sidewalk?
Yes.
From east to west all the way?
Right.
Will there be a sidewalk on this property?
Not on Vista, there is no sidewalk on this side of Vista. The sidewalk has been planned on the, on the north side. But what we're doing is we're requiring through the handbook for pedestrian connectivity to the light with the crosswalk so people can get to that sidewalk on the other side and continue up into the trails and so forth.
Okay, now, looking further ahead, you're going to have crosswalks here at the, at the stoplight so people can cross from the south over to the north side. Will the speed limit be reduced as they come up to that stop sign?
Well, it's a, it's going to be traffic signal and the speed limit is, I believe, set by.
It says forty, forty-five, and I know I, I get passed out there every time I go out there.
And I don't know if the, it's the city of Sparks that sets the speed limit or RTC, I'm not sure, but it's, uh.
It is, it is a problem.
Yeah, I was just kind of worried about the crosswalks like up there in three ninety-five by Bonanza and that. You know, there's been so many people that have been hit.
Right, but that, but this is that actual signal, so there'll be a, you know, walk.
And they will have good visibility from the east to the west too, so.
Yes, that's why the location is in the center of this, so it's away from the curbs.
Right. Okay, thank you, Melissa.
All right, this is a, a public meeting, I'd like to open the public meeting. If anyone would like to speak, will they come forward, please? Public, I'm sorry, public hearing. Hearing none, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Ian?
I do have just two comments real quick. One is, should have been included in your packet, I did have one email from a concerned citizen that was concerned about traffic and so forth. It, it looked like from the email that was concerned about there being a non-signaled turning there and that it would be dangerous, we agree, that's why the signal's going to be required. The second thing was, I do know the part you're talking about and that kind of came from a comment that I got from, I had a few phone calls, I wouldn't say any of them were particularly negative, just concerned, you know, about the mix of uses, what kind of housing was going to go in there, those kind of things. And the, the, the person that specifically called and said they were going to look down on it, not down the nose, but, but down from above, is, is back here off of Old Waverly? I think is what the name of that street is. And that's, you know, when you drive out there, I always thought that was part of like the vistas or something, but up on top of that hill is still Wingfield, they're up there. So that's where she lived, that was her concern, was what she was going to have to look down on. So I thought I'd try to include it as, as a, a comment that, that was being made, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bring it back, any comments from the commissioners?
I want to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I move to forward a recommendation to the city council for a tentative approval of the Golden Triangle Plan Development Handbook associated with PCN 15058, adopting findings PDA through PDG, and the fact supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Good luck.
We have a general business item, we have actually two items. PCN 08011, consideration of and possible action on a request to approve the architectural building elevations for an approximately forty-five hundred square foot building in the northeast section, Zone D of the Legends Shopping Center in fulfillment of the requirements listed in the Legends at Sparks Marina Plan Development Handbook.
Members of the commission, Ian Critten, Senior Planner. So I had forgotten that I had the exact, the next item on our list, I wouldn't allow. So you can see from this vicinity map, this is the, the portion of the Legends Shopping Center. Here's Target, Sparks Boulevard here. This is where the, the sleep train location is proposed. That's the last pad in that northeast corner of, of Legends. There's some other sections that, that's still to develop, but that's that last piece there. So here are the, an example of the elevations that are being proposed. Staff reviewed them in conjunction with the Plan Development Handbook. The palette of colors and articulation and materials meet with those standards. The, the only color that is slightly an outlier is the blue and that's corporate branding. We didn't feel like it was a negative impact to the area, we thought it, it looked good. And so we recommend that these are approved. At the end of my presentation, there's not a lot to, to these. If you have any questions, I'm, I'm available to answer them.
Any questions from the commissioners?
I just, just one little question. The, this, this vicinity map doesn't show the other end of Target, past the TJ Maxx. There's a, there's a couple of buildings that we approved a few months ago that are currently being built there. Will, will that be, will we be done with the development or is there that one more little piece?
I think there's at least one more small piece on, on this side that's on Lincoln. I believe that Lincoln turns there. For this zone, this, this is Zone D, I believe, of the, how they did their, the, the site plan reviews for these. It's would be Zone D. So yeah, like I said, I think there's one more in here, but they, that would be addressed as it comes up.
Yeah, more curiosity.
Okay.
They're pretty much done with Zone D.
Getting close, for sure.
Are there questions for Mr. Critten?
Right under the item of general business, we have an informational presentation and discussion on the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, yeah, I have to make a motion.
We have to make a motion? Bring it back to the commissioners for a motion. Anyone prepared to make a motion?
Oh, I'll make a motion. I move to approve the building elevations for the approximately four thousand five hundred square foot building in the northeast section, Zone D of the Legends Shopping Center in fulfillment of the requirements set forth in the Legends of Sparks Marina Plan Development Handbook associated with PCN 08011.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Next item on the agenda is an informational presentation and discussion on the comprehensive plan, including an update on the preliminary phase two public outreach survey results and review of the project schedule.
Good evening, planning commissioners, I'm Karen Melby, Senior Planner. With me is Karen Craig from Creative Cities. We wanted to come before you today and give you an update on where we've been. We did an update about a month ago on the results. We did an update about a month ago on the results from Phase One, and so we wanted to give you a progress report. The other thing that we'd like to cover tonight is, one of the things that we want to remind you is that the master plan or the comp plan is actually the document that, is the planning commission document. You guys will be the ones who will be approving that, and it's the city council who certifies the approval. So that's part of the reason that we're here tonight, is we want to get some feedback from you guys and get some interaction. And what we'd like to do on this presentation is make it a little interactive, we're not going to, we don't want to be just talking at you, so we'd like to get some feedback from you as part of this presentation. We're going to be covering what, some of the results that we've been seeing, and then also where we're going to be going from here, and maybe briefly certain timing. For the record, Karen Craig with Creative Cities.
We are well underway, about halfway through the public outreach effort that's engaging residents in conversations about what they want to do and see for Sparks in 2030.
Oops, I'm sorry.
That's okay. As you're familiar, we did a vision survey back in December and January, followed by taking what we heard as the priorities from the residents and creating both a long version and a short version of the survey. The short version has fifteen questions plus a place for comments, it also asks where people live. The long version has twenty-five questions, a place for comments, and again, wanting to know where people live. They don't have to be residents of Sparks to complete the survey, but right now about eighty-five percent of the respondents are from Sparks. Other half from Reno, and a real small version, Oklahoma City would be the most interesting To date, we have four hundred and seventy-five surveys as of April eleventh when we put this together, that's about seventy-two percent of the statistical goal for a community our size of about a hundred thousand people. We're running right now at five percent margin of error and a ninety-nine percent confidence rating.
So what we've organized, our questions that we are going to present to you tonight is based on, based on the Phase One answers that we got, what we've established is what we're calling a policy framework topics. And so we've organized our, the comments or presentation tonight based on these policy framework topics. The comprehensive plan is not going to be a typical master plan where you have your housing element, your transportation element, and your land use element. The users are not going to be in like silos, we're going to try and incorporate, and that's why we're using the policy framework, is that we're trying to have topics that interrelate with each other. The first one that we're going to discuss tonight is managing growth. And Sparks is projected, right now our population is about ninety-three thousand and projected to be about a hundred and twenty thousand by the year 2034. Our night Sparks survey shows us that we're, one of the main things that they want us to do is to manage the growth. They're not necessarily against growth, but they want us to manage it. So the first question is, how should Sparks grow? So Chairman Camerota, how do you think Sparks should grow?
Well, from the survey, it looks like almost fifty...
No, no, I want to know your answer, don't look at the survey, I want to know what your answer is, and then we'll look at the survey.
Well, I cheated, sorry. It looks like the growth, the bulk of...
But what's your opinion? How do you think Sparks should grow? Because one of the things that we want to make sure that all of you have done the survey, that's critical, that you've got, you've all done the survey, so what's your opinion?
Focus would be new development, growth. And I'd like to see an urban core. I notice, you know, a lot of folks are saying more roads, more traffic, but I'd like to see us be a little more contained, that would be my wish, kind of an urban guy.
I have a question.
Yeah.
The next page, which George is...
Well, that's what, yeah.
He's making reference to. Is there someplace that the finish of those sentences are available to us?
Yes.
Because I was guessing on most of them, but some of them I...
That's one of the things I was doing last night, was I was finishing up. The first one says everywhere within the city, which is at five point two percent. The next one is focus new development along major highways and boulevards. The third one, which is at the fifty-four point five seven percent, is actually focus new development in existing areas by redeveloping and revitalizing the older parts of the city. So that's actually the number one answer that everybody is picking. Then the next one is growth into new areas outside of the city limits, and that's at three point nine percent. So then the second choice is all of the above, and in this one, they actually could choose all of the above. But there's quite a bit of difference for that second choice, you know, the majority is at that fifty-four percent, which actually kind of, I think, kind of surprised me, myself anyway, that people are seeing that they don't want us to be growing out. And that the next question is, you know, we asked, what do you see as the current boundaries? And you can see by the answers that actually the number one is, is do not grow outside the current city limits. And that's the thirty point two six percent. And then number two answer is that those, it's areas beyond or areas that would be annexed would be used for open space in parks.
It's sort of interesting that, back to that, focusing new development within existing, which is what George said, but it's, you know, that sort of suggests that the TOD stuff that we've been working on for ten years is what people want, but people don't, I mean, that's been a, that's been a, failure's too strong a word, but it certainly hasn't generated the kind of growth of kind of work, play, you know, work, live, play, or whatever the three things are that I always forget, along the TOD areas, you know, which is sort of what this suggests, that people are saying they want, not exactly TOD, but same idea.
How much available land is within the TOD district, you know, realistically? I mean, if all of a sudden they said we cannot grow outside the TOD area?
Well, I don't think it's, they're talking about TOD.
No, it's within the city limits, so that would include Spanish Springs Valley, within the city limits would all include Spanish Springs Valley, so. But the, I don't know actually in the TOD area, how many vacant lots, but I mean, the intent with some of the standards in the TOD was to encourage redevelopment.
Right.
So.
Which is one of the areas where City of Sparks is working, a lot of the, you know, like, planning to try to get an understanding of capacity to afford residential units throughout TMZ, and so they're looking at both, you know, vacant property, but also the redevelopment potential and, you know, and built out in previously developed areas. The other comment I would make, Commissioner Bowles, is that, you know, to some extent, you know, we adopted the TOD plans and zoning during the recession, right, for the recession, and so the reality is that there wasn't a lot of anything built anywhere for a period of time. And frankly, if you look at, you know, where apartments, for example, are being built or being proposed currently, a very significant portion of that is in fact in our TOD, so, you know, you're aware of the...
Might come to pass, yeah.
You're aware of the projects at Victoria Square, you know, we have three hundred-plus units under development there currently. Silverland Development is proposing the second phase. Landcap is, of course, looking to finally build out the wrap around the structure at the Marina, you know, they've acquired twenty additional acres there. So there's apartment development going on elsewhere in the area. I would say that, you know, the failure of the TOD might have been premature to declare, but so...
Yeah, failure is too strong a word, but it certainly is not where anyone fifteen, ten, or twelve years ago would have expected it, but maybe a lot of things aren't.
Okay, so moving on to some of the topical areas that are questions, the next section of responses have to do with connectivity, because it's an integral part of the fabric of our city and how we're moving from place to place. I think since you introduced the TODs, it's a great place to talk about that people are starting to think about streets and bus systems and pedestrian paths and trails and bike routes that are all serving to move us around, as opposed to just one option in your day. Mostly, we travel by car, but people are saying they would like that to not necessarily be the solution fifteen, twenty, or thirty years from now. The role connectivity plays within the city also doesn't strictly lie within the city of Sparks to control, it's affected by combined efforts with RTC, with NDOT, and others to collectively put together our plan. And what we need to do is work that the comprehensive plan has a wide range of transportation options that will both work within and be needed in the region. So, how would you like to commute to work in the year 2030? He's retarded.
I know that, but...
Slowly.
Slowly.
Or as fast as your wheelchair goes, right?
I don't know, I mean, really, I haven't been given a shot, I've been there for years.
Enjoy driving, you know, like some people, but, I mean, there is a lot of traffic out there, and you do get frustrated by driving, but, you know, unless we had bus service, you know, clear around the area of truck rentals, then there's really not much you can do about bus service.
I thought slowly was an interesting way to answer that.
Yeah, just take my time.
Yeah, exactly, I mean, we're living in a really hairy, scary, paced world, and if we have options that remove that kind of intensity, that may be good for everybody. You can see by, oh...
Just a question.
Please.
The original document, or the original questions you had, you had the ability to break it down by demographics and age and a variety of different things.
Yes.
And, you know, what we all read is that the millennials, you know, are going to drive less because they're interested in less in having a car, and they want to be either ride sharing Uber or something other than, you know, what we think of.
Segway.
Driving our car, yeah, just driving our car around. Is this page, are you able to break that down by?
We are, we haven't done that exercise yet because we're still waiting to hit the trigger of being statistically valid for the size of our population, you're seeing it about a hundred respondents short of that.
Okay.
So we want to do that work when all of a sudden it reflects...
It'd be interesting to see, because I'm with Tom, I would be in that seventy-nine percent, slowly, but still in it.
Yeah.
But you wonder if the twenty-five and thirty and thirty-five year olds would answer that question.
Well, I can tell you from the stakeholder meeting that I facilitated last week, yes, the millennials were saying, I want a bike, that's my number one choice, I want a bike. They talked a lot about biking along the southeast connector to work in the South Meadows, and if given that opportunity that was safe and beautiful and complete, they would do that as often as they could. Never crossed my mind. So I think they do think slightly differently than maybe some of us do. We will have, as soon as these statistics can be sorted and vetted, not only by age, by ethnicity, by ward, you'll be able to see that through different lenses.
Thank you.
I also think it's important to note on this slide that Armando and Karen recognize that even though this looks so overwhelming of people driving their own vehicle, the percentage of ride sharing, bus, bicycle, and walking is actually higher than what it is right now. So I think that even though this looks skewed, it has a really good sense of people wanting to work towards this as our future.
There must be people answer more than one.
In some questions...
Because it adds up to more than a hundred.
Yeah, in some questions, you were given the opportunity to answer two, your top So then this is how do we want to deal with our transportation priorities? As you can see, we're all over the street and all over the map here of what's important. Again, we still, we need a few more answers to make this really jump out, people were given the opportunity to select two. So the number one answer here is improving existing streets and road pavement conditions with forty-nine, fifty percent. And the second choice or top answer was build new roads and widen existing roadways. You know, all of this kind of leaning towards how you service individual cars, where some of the other answers would have been different. Next focus area we'll talk about for a few minutes is public safety, because to many, it's the most important to have fire and police protection for our residents. The survey tells us that crime is a significant concern, and particularly in our city's older neighborhoods. Also, we learned that adequate sewage treatment facilities and flood control can be, or may be desired to be built and always desired to be well-maintained.
Could you go back on that?
Sure.
From the fire department, emergency services?
Yeah.
The fifty-one percent, emergency medical, what, finish that.
Services.
Services?
Yeah, so I'll read here to you number one, two, and three.
So what it looks like is people are relying on the fire department for medical services rather than REMSA.
You bet, I just got an eight hundred dollar REMSA bill to go one point two miles.
Really?
And actually, for the fire department...
So, the number one answer was the fire department, emergency medical services at fifty-one percent, second answer here, emergency response, number three is fire suppression. And people were, had the option to select two of those.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the system's sort of set up that the fire responders are the first responders on those kinds of calls anyway, and so it's almost, whether you want it to be or not, that's...
Nine times out of ten, they get there before the ambulance.
Right, exactly.
Police services needed. Number one answer, neighborhood cops. We heard this in the first vision survey, and again in these follow-up questions, people want to know the policemen in their neighborhood, they'd like to know them by name, they'd like them to know where they live, where they work, be visible, not necessarily cruising in a car, and is unknown. It goes along with that theme of, we're a small town, we want to know our neighbors, we want to know our services. The number two answer here is that the youth, and we did look at this, Commissioner Bowles in the first one, the gang and, the gang unit and officers, that absolutely is a very real concern in some of our neighborhoods, and it's now running the number two answer in this part of the survey as well.
So the next topic is community facilities and services. Community facilities and services is another main function that the city provides. It includes the street maintenance, street lights, street signs, sewer collection and treatment, storm drainage, infrastructure, and also maintenance of all the city-owned parks and properties and buildings. In two thousand and three, twenty thirty, what should the city prioritize for public works? So you can see the number one answer is road maintenance, and that includes paving, striping, sweeping, and snow removal. That was the number one at sixty-seven, or almost sixty-eight percent. The number two answer at thirty-three percent was traffic light timing. And I, to me, in my opinion, is tied pretty much with park maintenance, because that's thirty-five, so there's not much of a percentage difference there at this point. So you can see that the public works main thing is our streets, is what everybody's looking at. And then the next question is, which city utilities and facilities are the most important for the city to procure? Make important, I can't say it, I'm sorry, when planning for growth. This one, actually, they got to select two, so we really don't have a strong answer at this point, but you can see at forty-four percent, new roads is the number one. And then again, in, because we're still only at three hundred and sixty-one answers, the sewer collection lines and sewer treatment plant and parks and, parks and community centers, I, in my opinion, are pretty much tied at this point for prioritaries.
That's interesting, given the requirements of the budget in order to maintain police and fire over the last eight or ten years, and the decrease in parks budgets.
Right. But everybody in the Phase One, I mean, that was one of the comments that kept coming up, was our parks, and particularly in the Marina, like, that, a lot of people made that comment, that parks were very important, important quality of life, and just very important to the community. Let's see. In looking at the services and what's important to the city and how should we... In looking at the services and what's important to the city and how should they be prioritized for planning for growth, the number-one is street maintenance, cleaning, and snow removal at forty-three-point-five percent. And then, number-two is community planning, which, yay, for us. I was, honestly, I was kind of surprised that planning got that. And then, second, the third one that comes up is code enforcement.
That one surprised me, too.
Yeah. Planning or code enforcement?
Pardon me?
The planning answer or the code enforcement answer?
Well, the code enforcement. I mean, it just, I mean, I'm glad to see people out there really responding to that.
Very much so. And code enforcement ranges from, you know, their grocery store shopping carts that are always left, you know, on my block, to, my neighbor has umpteen cars, to the house doesn't have tenants anymore, and it's, people, and it absolutely speaks to the pride of the community, that the code enforcement issues probably were the biggest overall impact of how, when it affects people's pride.
And I'm glad to see that.
Yeah. So, let's dive deeper into community and neighborhood character. We're hearing from the public that more focus on revitalization, including beautifying, updating, and fixing homes, communities, and businesses, rather than expanding or authorizing more or larger housing projects. People also want to see more parks, pools, and community classes. They're asking for more compact neighborhoods, that they know everybody who lives with them and can visit with them, whether it's at a park, but many people are beyond park age, and they're looking for classes and farmers' markets and other ways to get together. So, we wanted, we heard in the first version of the survey, "We love this place because it's a small town. It's a small community. It's a small city, but everything's here." So, we had to ask, "What does small community mean to you?" And what we got, number-one answer was, "A neighborhood with parks and playgrounds." Fifty-four percent. Number-two, we love this answer, "A vibrant downtown with shopping, restaurants, and events." You asked at the beginning, "Are we going to be something different than a bedroom community?" I think we're starting to see the vision that people would like that with energy and excitement, but also the joy and the connectedness of a small town. Let's ask you for a second, Commissioner VanderWiel, what, does this, do these answers incorporate what you, your vision is for small town and what really makes Sparks who we are?
Yes, it does, because, as a matter of fact, I grew up in Sparks, and then I lived out in North Dallas for twenty-three years, and I knew that, so I've seen both sides. It still has a great small-town feel, and I'm glad to see all of this.
And can you relate to sort of the prioritizing the public is giving with these different ways of thinking about it?
Oh, yes.
Okay, all right. So, you feel like we're capturing it in a way that seems reflective of...
Yes.
That's good.
Most definitely.
Okay. Any other comments?
No, I think you could keep a small-town effect over, because it all goes back to our roadways, which you said you were referring to. Bring some more bike paths and make sure that people adhere to the bike paths and not down the middle of the street.
Or down the sidewalks.
Yeah. And then, if you're going to run your buses, which a lot of people are going to go to in the future, especially if they're staying in a small-town environment, if you take a bus from a close place, then the buses need to get off the street. You need a pull-out where they can pick up these people, because I dare you to go down straightaway sometime when a bus stops in the middle of the lane, and you're behind it, and you can't go around. And I believe those two would add to a small-town environment if you could get that kind of traffic flowing that way.
Very good comments. Yeah. Any additional comments? Okay.
Was there any discussion about any other kinds of transportation, like light rail or anything?
You know, there was, in the, in the initial vetting of the questions, but then we looked at the horizon the plan looked at, which is only fifteen years. Light rail should be evaluated, but we, but not in a fifteen-year horizon, so it wasn't, it, that's on a, it's kind of on a different scale than this particular comprehensive plan was looking at. So, yes, valid idea, no, not in this plan. Downtown. We weren't certain that we would get this answer, but we are delighted that seventy-seven percent of people feel that Victorian Square is the heart of our, of our community. Almost everything else is quite far behind. So, there's no mystery here that people are considering different downtowns. So, again, the job or the task of the planning and the planning commission is, what is downtown going to be? How are we going? How are we going to grow? How are we going to redevelop? People are saying they want it, so you guys have to imagine it and put the policies in place that allow it to happen.
So, the, another important component is housing and affordable housing. This includes your housing types, a variety of housing types, locations, housing relative to different household incomes, and obviously, it plays an important part. Affordable housing and housing projects to meet the increased potential population of the community is really important. So, what do you think would be the most, most typical type of housing that you would expect that everybody would want to be living in the year two thousand, I mean, twenty-thirty? Because, I mean, we had a lot of people say that in their comments, and so that was one of our deep dives, was to say, get some direction on what people could, anticipated that kind of housing they would be living in. So...
I think right now, most of developers going to a smaller lot, smaller home. I mean, it seems like we've had a lot of them come up here before this planning commission, and, you know, they're not usually that six-thousand-square-foot lot, you know.
Go to that zero-maintenance is what you're after.
Mm-hmm.
But in the same token, then, wouldn't that depend on the size of families that anticipate going in Sparks? So, you would have to, I think you would have to consider how many of those old folks are in here, are not going to be here at all, and how many of the young people are coming up and going to get married and have families. And if we have a small-town environment, they're going to want to stay. And so, it would depend on how size of their families are, what size of housing they're really going to need.
Yeah, well, the surveys, almost sixty percent want a house on a medium to a large lot.
Right. According to the survey.
Yeah.
Right. It's a, because we're a family community.
Right.
What's interesting, though, how many, how many apartment buildings have you seen come through this commission in the past, you know, six months and a year? Yet, the public is saying less than three percent is interested in living in an apartment. So, really interesting, you know, perception, demand, desire to be...
Well, of course, you're not, I mean, if you, if you assume that apartment is not, is a step towards something else for many people.
Yeah.
That, there, you're, it's the people that are now in apartments that are saying fifteen years from now, they're going to be in a house somewhere. But the people that are going to be in the apartments fifteen years from now are ten now or fifteen now.
Yeah.
You know, not all of them, obviously, the significant percentage that's going to be there.
Yeah. Good point.
That's a good point.
That's a very good point.
And actually, in the stakeholders' meeting, that was one of the, one of the respondents said was that it's hard to, they had difficulty when they were doing the survey. They had a hard time envisioning fifteen years from now what they would be doing. And that was one of the comments from one of the stakeholders at the meeting.
What's the definition of a medium-to-a-large lot?
That would be six thousand to maybe half an acre or something.
Okay.
The next topic would, is resiliency and sustainability. The, this is be addressing the management of disruptive forms of change, things that happen in the community and how we deal with them as a community, and our ability then to meet the needs of these problems or disruptive change that happen without sacrificing our ability for the future generations to meet their needs. So, the question that we asked is, what policy should the City of Sparks pursue to maintain fiscal health for the, for the city? And the number-one answer at sixty percent was aggressively pursue growth that enhances tax revenues. And then, number-two, which is not that far behind at fifty-two or fifty-three percent, is increase the city's cash revenues and reduce the city's debt. And that's at fifty-two percent. The other ones are, and this was also a question that they could answer, they, they, you got to select two. So, I think that's probably why these two answers are running neck and neck.
You were probably happy to see that you, they want the planning staff, and they don't, evidently don't care about reducing city personnel costs.
Yeah, right. We had to see what they, you know, what the community's perception.
It's very interesting, in the stakeholder meeting we had last week, and I'll say this respectfully for the group that was there, but there was a big disparity between a few people who were, do not charge me, I'm paying more than I want to pay in taxes, but the majority of people in that particular meeting, kind of quietly, one person said, "I want to pay more for what I would like to have." And then, the next person said that, and then the next person said that.
Maybe not want to pay more, willing to pay more might be a better way.
Um, that, you know, yes, but say that they're, they're very clear on, that was the group that wanted parks and bike lanes and clean water and, and said, "I'm willing to pay for that." So, I was surprised because you sort of watched the spectrum unfold from A to Z, really, in the conversation.
And we've actually been seeing some of the comments, people saying that, too, "Tax me," which kind of surprised me, because you always hear, "No more, no new taxes." You always hear that statement, and so we were kind of surprised that we're actually hearing people say that. The next question relates to the community's sustainability and how to, what Sparks should focus to increase our community sustainability. The first number-one answer became water conservation, which makes sense considering that we've just been in a drought, and so that's fresh on everybody's mind. But actually, the three answers here are, are very close. We've got fifty-three percent, fifty-two percent, and forty-seven percent. So, actually, and this was another question that you have a choice of selecting two, but all three of these are very close to you. And so, then, solar and renewable energy is at fifty-two-point-six percent, and then protection of wetlands and rivers is at forty-seven percent. So, it's interesting that all three of those have been chosen, and they're all very close together.
Okay. So, the last segment of focus was economic vitality. Obviously, that we have to have a vital economy to keep this beautiful place that we call home. It's also based on, on the characters of the community. So, we gave, we gave the public three choices. Would you agree with what they picked as their number-one? I see a couple, mm-hmm, and a couple, mm-mm.
What was the rest of that sentence, attract new business?
Business and industries.
Industries.
Uh-huh. And attract, and the third one is attract tourism and special events. So, number-one was retaining existing businesses. Number-two, a second answer, is attract new, new businesses and industries. And the third is attract tourism and special events.
I would have guessed that.
Okay. You would have guessed that. But we heard in the first survey, were a lot of people that said, "We, we have a community that has lots of great big-box and franchise types of businesses, but we miss having the local store. We miss our, we miss going to shop from a neighbor and support a neighbor." So, I think that's worth keeping in mind as, as we look at some of these answers in economic What strategies should we use to adopt economic vitality? This is fascinating. Number-one at sixty percent answering, optimize technology and online services to become more business-friendly. Number-one answer. Number-two, allocate additional city funds to support special events. Number-three, permit large warehousing and distribution facilities in the Spanish Springs portion of Sparks. And number-four, increase the amount of land zoned for commercial and industrial activities. So, what I get from this as a translation is that the public is asking to move more towards technology, more towards industries that they can do, industries, jobs that they can do from home, from a neighborhood, but be, be mobile using technology and not necessarily expanding into footprints or enlarging footprints to create large industrial-type of development. So, next step, we have a range of comments that we could share with you, but actually, we've had a really good conversation, so maybe we should ask if you have any, any kind of wrapping types of observations.
Just a general question. Would the, would the, the number of respondents be kind of where you expected it to be? Is it more difficult to get people to fill out the longer form? And, and what's your timeframe for getting to the number that you hope to get to?
Can I make you giggle? It's such a great answer. We have, and this is in deference to Professor Ornalis, because he really fought to stick with the long version of the survey, which was painfully long, in our professional opinion. We have more people answering by four to one, the long survey. And when we look at the demographic split on the long survey, it is running quite high in Hispanic Latino. Interestingly enough, the short survey and the comments that go with the short survey are much older residents and residents who are taking the comment areas where they can write their own comments in at the end to talk about very picky and things that affect their lives right now. "Streetlights are out on my block," or, you know, something, it's very, it's not, it's not, the short survey isn't in the scope of what we're trying to do in many response. So, I actually think we're getting an incredible depth of response where we are right now and where we're going. So, we're about a hundred short of hitting our, our statistical average. We have, and within that hundred, we're really trying to focus on making sure that we stay at that same ratio of Latino-Hispanic. Right now, we're at about eighty-one percent white who have answered. We need to bring the level of Hispanic Latinos back in line. Our age breakout is good. So, the next things we have targeted to get us back into, into that ratio is Boys and Girls Club, we're at the El Rancho Flea Market, we're doing an event at the Mexican consulate, we're going to be in the industrial area of Sparks, working with some of the food trucks. As people come and get food, they can take our survey. And we're working with Sparks High School students on an Instagram project where they're going to use their phones to sort of upload their vision of what they'd like to see happen. So, those are some, that, that's where, that's where Renell and I at RAD are focusing our time, trying to get that input.
Is the survey multilingual or...
It's multilingual. What, let me, and also to reassure you, just getting to six-sixty-four, being the statistical, it really allows planning and the planning commission to know that you have a representative sample, and that we're still really working towards a total of two thousand people, because that feels right, to have the community have two thousand voices involved in this. But the statistical benchmark should mean that what we're seeing at that time isn't going to, isn't going to change that much the more surveys we, we enter into the, into the mix. So, our timeline or horizon, we're here tonight, we're at Planning Commission, we're doing these activities, including bus tours, which we should talk about, boots-on-the-ground. Shall we move forward a slide? Okay. So, I started to describe the, the boots-on-the-ground activities a moment ago. We are also working with community groups, church groups, and HOAs to get surveys into neighborhoods. We're doing the stakeholder meetings, as I started to mention. This is primarily business people, planning professionals who are coming. We're still being asked today, we were asked by the Green Braided Lions to come and speak to their group. And I'm missing the last, most important, bus tours.
Right.
The bus tours. We're going to be offering three, two- to three-hour bus tours for about twenty people on each bus. What we'd like to do with that focus group, and I think you would be very valuable members to join one of those bus tours, is that we wanted to get actually out in the community and start to look at some of the experiences. Let's give you an example. If people are saying we want more density to, and to redevelop in the downtown area, the bus tour most likely would come right here on this corner and look at what a two- or three-story apartment building looks and feels like next to a single-family residential block. And so, we want to, we want to, we want to both hear what people are saying in the survey, but take some, some more fine-tuned eyes on this bus tour to really say, "You're right. That, that looks right to us as we craft this policy." Or, "Hmm, I don't know that that's what we were picturing, even though that's what we hear people are saying." So, that's an activity we're actually meeting tomorrow morning at eight-thirty. So that's an activity we're actually meeting tomorrow morning at eight-thirty to set the date.
Are you going to post the schedule for the bus tours?
It'll be, we're going to reach out to certainly to do.
We're going to send out, yeah.
There'll be, there'll be invitations. And if you'd like to recommend somebody to be on the bus tour, please let Karen or Renell or I know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we would like to get, you know, those done. We're going to try and do those in the next few weeks.
Yeah.
So, because we're trying to wrap up the survey stuff in May, because we have to have the document written by, by the end of June, so. And one of the, the critical things is, you know, we have to take all this information. We only presented sixteen of the questions tonight, there's actually twenty-five questions, but we just picked out the ones that we felt were most pertinent. So, but we have to take this information, and we're going to need your help to take this information and interpret it and to establish our policies. So as we start analyzing this information, and then we're going to be bringing it back to you and getting some feedback on, from you, on the, where are we going to do our policies? What should be our community goals and what should be our policies for these, based on what we're hearing from the community? So that's really important. So, you know, and I can send you that, when we get the final results or near our target, then we'll send it all out to you and let you, so you'll have that information you can see, so that you can start looking at it and doing some of your own analysis, or, and so that way, when we come and bring you policies, then you can say, well, you know, I'm not really sure I interpret it that way, the way the staff is interpreting it. So we will be giving you the, when we get the more closer to, or on target than with our targeted number, you know, significant number, then we'll send that out to you, so you guys will have your own copy that you can look at and do your own analysis of. But that's part of the reason we wanted to make this presentation today, is to get your feedback and get some, get you guys thinking about it.
Yeah, it's time to get your engines going.
Yeah.
Okay, and then just to conclude and remind you, number one, if you haven't taken the phase-two survey, please, please, go ahead and do so. And if you can take that link and forward it on to your friends, colleagues, business associates, family, this is how we're getting all the input. It's all just word, it's passed on emails, word-of-mouth, that's rippling through the community. And then Karen and I wanted to make sure that you left with understanding, again, that this is your plan, the planning commission's plan. You helped develop it, you approve it, and then it just goes to City Council that, I want to say RAD.
Certifies.
It, so this is really your baby, okay?
Do you guys have any other questions, comments?
Comments from the commissioners?
It's a fun job, yeah.
This is the fun stuff.
This is a great community.
adjournment? I knew you were going to say that. This is a public hearing, would anyone like to come forward and make a comment? Public comment, seeing no, the closing of the public comment is closed. Bring it back.
Good adjournment.
Pass it to the commissioners.
You're starting to take control, George.
There we go. Hey, a little late for that.
Yeah, that's exactly.
Had to wake you up.